Good job.
Just a star.
You didn't fall out of the chair.
A bow?
A cologne, yes.
Anybody here?
Yeah, I have it.
He texted me just a little bit ago, he's not going to make it. So he will not be here this evening.
Can you guys?
I didn't ask for clarification.
Maybe for Christmas.
Christmas.
We were having to follow. How possible. You have them.
Yep, now it's just to put a rake in the oil.
I don't have an issue.
They follow the right.
One of your steps. If they require financial information, right?
Yep, I will send them a copy.
Public care is if you share with the public your financial information and share it to other towns. It's pretty good. Different stuff. I have no problem. Doing our part. Call the public caring to order. Is that the right word? Public caring to order. Public caring number one marijuana facility license renewal application for bioactive LLC located at fourteen eighty-seven Main Street. Anybody here from that organization? Welcome. Anything you wish to add?
Vote being a renewal like.
Yep. Public comment on the renewal. Chief Jack.
No inspection missing, these are all off the park.
Last chance, anyone? Left forward. Close the public caring. Call the select meetings meeting to order.
Ladies and gentlemen. In the United States of America. Into a republic which stands. One nation, under God. Indisitable with liberty and justice for all.
Action in minutes.
Will you accept?
Motion to second and discussion. All those in favor? Vote. Addresses to the agenda?
I have nothing, sir.
Vote what comment? Please state your name and town you are from. Anyone? All those who's happy.
They didn't pixie into the road down there. I thought that was gonna be right when I went across.
I might say something. Go ahead. Ricky told me I had to behave first. I want to just thank the taxpayers for allowing the society in their vote. Sounds like it was a win-win for the society with the gay health. So we look forward to next year and making, you know, it look good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Business items, five point one. Review and approve marijuana facility license renewal application for bioactive LLC located at fourteen eighty-seven Main Street.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Five point two, appoint Kathlin Arjey doing as registrar of workers.
Same vote.
Then if moved and seconded any discussion? All those in favor? Vote.
It's a registrar.
Yeah.
Five point three, review approved liquor license renewal application for Applebee's Bar and Grill.
Same vote.
Second.
Moved and seconded any discussion? No issues, chief?
Not at all.
All those in favor? Vote. Five point four, Caleb Group development proposal. Is it gonna take long?
First, hi, I think he spoke, I'm Suzanne.
Hi, nice to meet you first time.
Thank you. So I'm Suzanne DeGueva with the Caleb Group. We have a presentation together. So Ginny, our architect's gonna hook up the computers, you can all look at it. Also have handouts. I have fifteen, so you guys can have some too. And then Andy's our development consultant and we'll all be pitching in, so.
Kingston. Kingston, do you mind playing the lights? See if they get that.
Maybe a little happier light. There we go. You can put it up on the box maybe a little higher. You want all of them?
She did doing this a few times?
Yeah, I think the only option is this or all the way off. As long as people behave themselves, then it'll be good. Actually, Kingston, can I get one of those?
Hello?
Put it on the box.
I could certainly try that. We don't want to knock it off. Looks like it's bigger than that. We'll find out. Wouldn't mind getting one for Jack there, so.
I think you might just pull it back a little.
How's that? So as long as Wendy doesn't get too rambunctious, it'll be good.
Is it fuzzy or does it mean? No, it's fine. Okay.
It's fine.
If you want, I can really turn the lights all the way down, but.
It's okay, I mean you have the handouts, so it's okay.
This is the presentation, the handout.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll just, I'm gonna position myself to sit there, I'll just stand here. So obviously we're here for the Robinson Mill, which we're looking to develop into housing. And I'll go into the details of what we've done to date, where we're at and what our ask is. So first off, I mean I already introduced you to Ginny and Andy, they're part of the core team. On the slide I have an extensive list of logos which identifies a bunch of the folks we're working with. So I'm with the Caleb Group and I'm the director of acquisitions, so essentially I do real estate development. I'll go into who we are as an entity. And then I'll go over the development plan, the work we've done to date. Ginny will cover the architectural and site plans. And then I will head off to Andy to go over anything that's money related essentially. Income targeting, the project budget, the tech request. So we'll go over all of that. So essentially our team is fairly extensive. We have a site survey or an architect, a development consultant, environmental consultant, historic consultant onboard and any name it. So we have a solid team already in place for the project. So what I wanted to do after that was go into who the Caleb Group is as an overview. Adam's already seen it as well as the chief, but I'll go over it so you get a sense of who we are as an organization. Thanks for the slide screening. So we're a five oh one C three, so that means a nonprofit. We're based out of Lynn, Massachusetts, which is on the North Shore of Boston. We were founded back in nineteen ninety-two with the intention of developing, owning, acquiring and managing affordable housing rentals. So we develop them, acquire and we never ever sell them, we hold on to them. And our mission, as you can see, is to provide affordable, stable, environmentally sound housing to a diverse population while offering a range of services that empower residents and success. So that's who we are in a nutshell. Next slide. So our portfolio is fairly extensive, we have about thirty communities of properties. The majority of them are multifamily. As you can see, we're spread out in four states across New England. We have about nineteen hundred units and forty-two hundred residents. In Maine, we have a fairly large presence, as you can see Bangor, Lewiston, Portland. I mean, you can read it through, but we have an extensive portfolio. And really, I think the properties where the Caleb Group started in Maine, because our co-founders spent a lot of time here, so. So that's who we are in our presence. So as discussed, well actually, I didn't discuss it, but we have the intent, as you might already know, to develop the mill into housing, more specifically housing for seniors. So sixty-two plus. And these are some of the services that we provide onsite. So these folks would be here full-time, so we're talking about property management, resident service coordinators and maintenance facilities. So these folks would be here, not twenty-four seven, but you know, eight to five or nine to five. Five days a week. And we've incorporated spaces into the plants to accommodate for offices and storage and community space. Next slide. This more specifically talks to the services that we would be providing to the community. Typically, this is customized with the residents. So a survey is sent out, this is with the residents, they figure out what they want to have, what they want to work with. And so it could be any, anything that's listed there and more. So we really strive to work with them and do that and connect them to outside services as well, should there be any. So I kinda went fast on who we are, so if you have any questions, please ask. All right. What? Okay, good. All right, next one, so let's, the mill, so the, I'll just cut to the chase. We actually just acquired the mill last Thursday, so we're now the proud owners. And as you might know, we went to wreck it on Monday as well. So the Caleb Group, we're actually the Caleb Foundation, which is a development arm of our entity, acquired the mill last week. So we're really serious about this. We want to see it done. So the intent is to do an adaptive reuse of the mill into affordable housing for older adults, I remember repeating myself. This will, we believe, address the housing shortage across Oxford County and actually in general in Maine, because I think there's a demand need of housing. And then we also believe that it's gonna help revitalize that part of the town by, you know, restoring the mill, getting rid of the ice shore, reconnecting the footbridge, reconnecting the two parts of town. The way we see it happening is a three-phase project, so I'll go over that on the next, on the next slide. What we intend to do is essentially demo the majority of their warehouses, we're gonna keep a little piece of it for some housing. And as mentioned, it's gonna free access to the footbridge, it's gonna restore the mill to its previous glory. And then we intend to do that with like, these are a bunch of acronyms, but this is a bunch of sources that we're looking to chase. EPA, everyone is probably familiar with the EPA. We actually just applied for an EPA cleanup grant this past Monday for the mill. Now we're, Andy and I are busy chasing money to, for demo and whatnot. We actually talked to Terry at the state for CBPG, so I'll be submitting something to you shortly on that topic.
Great.
So we're also gonna leverage historic tax credits. We intend to have the mill classified as a historic building. And then it's gonna help us, once it's registered, then we'll be able to go and chase a bunch of historic tax credits to fix the mill. So that's what we intend to do. So the next line, please. So this is a bird's eye view of the mill. Essentially, these are the two mill buildings, right, from the eighteen nineties. This is the boiler house that's tucked down here. And then what we're not showing is the grist mill. Apparently has a lot of significance to the town, so we're gonna really try to do something with it. It's in really bad shape, but we're gonna try to make that happen. So essentially, we're gonna have these four buildings, we're gonna demo the rest, right? And then we're gonna keep the foundation, the walls and the roof on this one, right? And where you see the red, that's where the second building's gonna be, so that's the U-shaped building. We call it new construction, even though we're really leveraging what's already in place. So what we're looking to do is do thirty units in here. Currently, between these buildings, we're looking at seventy-seven and possibly another two in the mill, in the, in the grist mill. So we're looking at maybe seventy-seven, seventy-nine. We're still moving things around inside from the programming perspective, but that's roughly what we're looking at. And then, so before Ginny shows you the actual plans of what it's gonna look like, I just wanna talk to what we've done to date in terms of progress. Do you want to go to the next slide? Oh, thank you. So today, as mentioned, we just bought the mill. We've been working with Ginny and her team to actually put together architectural and civil plans. The team's been fairly busy. We've developed site surveys, we have a new deed. And then we've been in touch with the Maine Historic Preservation Commission and submitted a form, so they're fully aware. And they've told us, few demo, the warehouses, apparently it's gonna look good, because the mill still looks quite intact. So we have a really good chance. Then we've also been reaching out to various town departments, reached out to you. We also reached out, well, to your colleague as well. The, what was it, the fire chief? And then we've been reaching out to water and sewer. So we've been incorporating feedback that we've heard into the drawings. And it wasn't, it was quite minimal, so it's looking good. Also, we've been talking with Kingston and Adam about zoning and what to do to modify the density. So we're, we, our civil guy drafted a document, an application, and we'll be probably submitting it over the next few days to get the process going. Yeah. And then I reached out to you about the project and you seem fairly supportive about that. We've had a chat about walking the mill to look for any leftover artifacts from back in the day when the mill was operating and, and see if those, whatever's left in there could go to, in the museum. Because it has historic significance. So that's what we've done to date. We've probably done other things I haven't listed, but we've been quite busy. So that's all it is.
So again, I want to give you an overview of our current design. So this is the, we're restoring the historic mill building back to its original state. Currently, there, you know, addition upon addition upon addition have been added on to, to the building. So this is kind of the new U-shaped building, where we're keeping the exterior wall, keeping the roof, we're keeping the floor slab and then taking out anything interior and anything related connecting to the, to the mill building. All of this is going away. We're, we like to relate the materials to each other, so we're proposing Burke at the moment for this new U-shaped building. The landscape design will be, you know, it will be a process and just meeting with the town, see what everybody wants. But, you know, the thought is to have gathering spaces, to have places for gardening and things like that. There's enough parking for each tenant basically to have their own parking spot. And then I think we have a few extras for employees.
So right now it's like a one-to-one ratio parking?
Yeah.
So one spot per tenant or per unit?
Yeah, and then we, we're bringing back kind of the connection to get over the bridge and to get to the rest of the town. That will be a kind of a pedestrian connection more than a vehicle, vehicular connection. Then on the roof, there will be a conduit going up for future solar panels. And if it isn't a budget, we are gonna do our best to incorporate that in the initial program and design. We're going fossil fuel free on, on the building.
You mean all electric?
All electric. So I'll run you through some of the images.
So some of what we wanted to do is keep the parking away from the center of the building, so it was more of a friendly garden park feeling. And people could just feel comfortable being there and not having cars in front and gas emissions and all that. And that's why the parking is more on the side. And also, as discussed with the fire chief and the fire captain, the bridge would not sustain any of the trucks, which we're sort of happy to hear, because that way we don't have to open it and it could just remain a pedestrian access as well as bicycles.
Yeah, and so we're, we've been creating this whole courtyard to kind of connect the two buildings together through exterior space. And then in the building will be kind of laundry, laundry areas and, and community room offices for maintenance and helping, helping residents with, with any, any renovation. This is kind of from the, taking it from the street view, like how you would approach, approach the buildings. Looking at some of the exterior spaces. In both buildings, we have an actual drop-off right in front of the building, so if you want to. If they, you know, if they have trouble walking or whatever, they need to be dropped off. A lot of the windows have been eliminated, we're gonna bring, you know, bring them back. All, all new windows, bring them back to, you know, what they used to be.
So the mill building also will have an elevator, just so you know. That's a requirement and you can't expect folks to come four floors either, so there'll be an elevator.
And here's kind of the site plan, so you can kind of see the, the vehicle coming in. You can either go, be dropped off here and go, be dropped off here, or they can just find, find parking anywhere. Get back out. So yeah, as you see here, all the vehicle activity is here. And this becomes really like a nice courtyard for the residences to enjoy. And then here we have the, the boiler house and connection to the building. There will be two units in there, loft, loft-style units. But these are all one-bedroom units at the moment.
And the same in the mill, they're all one bedrooms.
You can see how it's, so, so this is the U-shaped building, it's, so it's one level. It's a double loaded corridor. There are three entrances basically into the building. And this is one floor of, of the mill building. So this is a four-story portion of the building, existing building, this is a three-story building.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but since the parking lot is here, we're gonna make this the main entrance. And we're probably gonna reshuffle this a little bit to maybe put the offices there. But initially, we had the intent of putting the entrance there, but since the parking is there, realistically, everyone's just gonna come in through here. So we're probably just gonna switch it to here, the main entrance.
Yeah, and this will be kind of more of a connection to, to your pedestrian exterior courtyard.
Any questions on the, on the design before we move to the next, to the next step? No?
Will the marina still be there?
Oh yeah, that's a separate property.
Well, I mean, I.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I, I realize, it's still for sale, right?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think we acquired all of it, or is it still?
No, we just acquired the Robinson Mill site. We're gonna reach out to the marina to coordinate efforts, you know, because we're, we're budding, we're neighbors. But no, we're not acquiring that site, it's too expensive to. Can't afford that, so, yeah.
So you said the parking was one-to-one ratio, so one space for every unit? Obviously, some of the units might have somebody that doesn't drive, but you're gonna have visitors and stuff. Where, what's the plan for?
Over four?
Are there X number of spaces for visitors?
Yeah, so the initially with seventy-seven units, really three units floating, three slots floating. I think we might have to increase the parking a little bit.
But that should, you know, we have a really large site, so it's, it shouldn't be a big deal to add a few parking spaces to the site.
So on the line of parking, if you have a couple of them in a unit and each have a vehicle, you have no option to accommodate that right now.
So I'd have to go and look back at our existing properties and figure out if each unit actually has a car, to understand what, what the reality is. But, yeah, I don't have a clear answer on that. We're not too worried, but I'll go and look at what our properties currently have and see if the parking really is an issue and how many households actually have two, two cars per, per unit.
Yeah, since the globally senior housing, we've done quite a few. And it's usually, you know, some, some residences don't have a vehicle at all and others might have two. So it kind of, it equals each other.
Not to push on this spot, Kingston, but does the land use ordinance address that issue with the number?
I gotta look into it, this actually wasn't anything that was brought to my attention before, so I think it's something I can zero in on and, and we'll figure that out. Because I'm actually dealing with a potential variance with another big project, four parking spaces themselves, but this is a little more involved. This is, you know, residential, not necessarily a commercially used, so I'll look into it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I ask, because if you don't have the parking there, that means you're gonna be parking on the street, which is on the corner.
No, we'll, we'll, we have ample spaces, Ginny says, and we'll accommodate that. And then across the street, or across the bridge, the mill is, the grist mill is just an upcoming plot, so we haven't quite incorporated that in the drawings yet. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not keen on putting parking there, but this, you know, we have space, so we're not too worried.
Yeah, it'd be good easily, you know, make the parking larger.
Yeah, but also, I, I don't want this to become like a high school parking lot, that just goes on and on and on.
No. Seventy-five units there.
No, I know, I know, I get it.
You gotta put them somewhere.
Exactly.
We have eighty parking spaces at the moment.
Yeah.
What about sidewalks? Does it have sidewalks for the elderly that they want to go out and?
So that, that crossing the line, it's probably coordination with the town, right? I have a.
Do you mean internal to the site? Because the site's four and a half acres, so it could be a lot of internal walkways.
No, I think she meant along King Street.
Along King Street, that actually recently was done.
There is sidewalk there.
There is now, just this last year.
What about like where the post office is? I don't think I've met on that side.
Yeah, there's. So where that more level building is going to be, again, there's the post office, so assuming the older people want to walk to the post office, what's the, what's the access and sidewalks and safety and walkway? So assuming the older people wanna walk to the post office, what's the, what's the access and sidewalks and safety and walkway?
Well, I think, I think historically, because that road has been a dead end, uh, there hasn't really been a sidewalk along that edge from the Watten Bridge to the corner of Pleasant Street. Uh, that wouldn't necessarily have anything to do with this project though, 'cause they don't own that land.
But maybe something the town can consider in taking it.
We, I'm not sure we own that land either, along the post office.
So the, um.
I have to look into that.
I think what we own is, um, I have to look at the documents we just recorded, but I think it's, it's this piece and then that house on that side. Yeah, and maybe just a little piece behind.
The post office, I don't know.
Yeah, that's post office, right?
So this is, yeah, so this is all pedestrian here. So the only, uh, car, it says it would be kind of here. So it doesn't seem like a very risky, um, walk to just walk over the, over the.
Well, years ago, the kids, that's how the kids got to school. Because I live on King Street.
Yeah.
And our kids, until it was blocked off, they walked across that bridge. They walked down King Street, walked across the bridge, cut through the mill area.
Yeah.
And then went to school across the street to Oxford Elementary.
We'd love to see that again, um, but obviously you need sidewalks, so. Um, just in terms of timeline, timeline, no, I didn't touch on that. Um, this, this is gonna take a long time, right? So we're probably not gonna put a shovel on the ground for quite some time. The first shovel you might see in the ground would be for like demo and abatement, right? So that's what we call phase zero. So Andy and I are like busy chasing that money right now. So as I said, we just applied for EPA, we're gonna apply for CBBG next year. Um, we're adding up a few other things, but, um, and there are other things we need to coordinate with. Uh, but the earliest, the earliest, and, you know, um, it might even be much later than that, would be like a year from now, right? If we can line up all the financing and, uh, coordinate things with Main Housing. And Main Housing is the entity that gives the low-income housing tax credits that enable the construction of these buildings or that we have. Uh, so phase zero essentially be done on abatement. And, um, I think once that's done, we don't really want the mill and the buildings sitting empty. We'd probably wanna start construction right after that. So the timing, we're still trying to figure out the timing, it's all up in the air, but I would anticipate this being completed for another three to four years, right? So that's like long-term horizon, and we're still working through the timeline.
Yeah, sure. So my name's Andy, I'm helping the team, um, mostly, uh, study the, the budgets and the financing, so I'll be talking about that. And, um, also explain, um, why we're here. We're gonna be asking for a TIF, for a tax abatement, so I'll walk through that a little bit. So, um, this, this project is, um, it's a big site. It's got a lot of hazardous materials issues, it's got historic fabric that we have to work with. Um, it's one of those sites where, uh, private funding and private development just hasn't worked. Um, there have been previous plans that I think haven't gone very far. And, um, really, the only, the, the only way that I know to develop housing of a site like this is to bring in public financing, bring in all of our taxpayer money in different forms at the, at the federal level, state level. Um, and so the, the primary funding programs that we're pursuing are through the Maine State Housing Authority. Um, we expect those to be issued next month in December. Um, the application will be due in February or March. And then it's gonna be, there's gonna be a competitive scorecard, we'll be competing with projects all over the state. But looking at previous scorecards, we have some idea of, you know, of the fact that they're gonna prioritize, um, rehab sites in, in existing facilities. They like to prioritize, um, housing in certain towns, which would include Oxford. And, um, they also, we'll get to that a little later, but it, to the extent that the town can also help as a financial partner, that helps with the scorecard, also helps with our financing. But the, um, the type of housing that we're talking about developing is affordable housing. So it's, the, the definition of that would be, we're gonna offer the rentals to households earning sixty percent or less of the area of median income. And, um, so the, the area in this context would be Oxford County. Um, and they have a whole bunch of charts for all over the state, um, based on census data, what the incomes are. But, um, looking at the twenty-twenty-three charts, if there was one person in the household, we're talking about an annual income of thirty-one thousand eight sixty. If there's two people in the household, thirty-six thousand four twenty. So those are the income ranges we're talking about. So if someone has a very high income, they, the assumption is they have other maybe options for housing. If they have a very, very low income, um, they may not be able to afford the rents here. So we're, we're kind of in this mid-range, you might say. So the rents are, um, capped at, uh, basically one, one-third of the, of the income. So if you do the math and divide by twelve months and divide by three, you end up with, um, basically eight hundred fifty-three dollars per month, um, for a one-bedroom apartment. That's, that's the affordable rent. So that's, that's the most that we're allowed to charge, uh, for these apartments. And so that, those rents would include heat, hot water, um, regular water, sewer, on-site parking.
Air conditioning too, since we're doing heat pumps.
Yeah, the heat pumps would also be air conditioned. So all the utilities would be included in that number, um, trash removal. And the, the way the age restriction is defined is that the head of household needs to be sixty-two years old or older. Um, and like I said, these are all one-bedrooms, so it's possible there would be maybe two people in a household, but we don't, we don't tend to see that at the other, um, senior housing properties. They tend to be, you know, single, older adults in, in the units, um, next slide. So, um, so it's a big project, has a lot of complications. Uh, we have to deal with a lot of demolition, abatement, and repairing rot and all sorts of things. Um, the total project budget, it's almost thirty-two million dollars. Um, of that, the, the biggest blue slice of the pie here, that's our construction. Um, we've been working with a local builder to do some construction estimating based on our plans. There's also, you know, of course, we have to pay for the land, we have to pay for the demolition, the initial demolition, we clean up what we're calling phase zero. Um, there's, there's always lawyers and accountants and bank interest and all that stuff involved. All the consultants, uh, permits, you know, just goes on and on. I could show you the whole list, but to cut to the bottom line, we're, to do the demolition, the abatement, um, the work in the historic building and the thirty-unit new construction building, we're projecting is almost thirty-two million dollars worth of work. And again, the, you know, three-quarters of that's the construction work, of course. Um, next slide. So, uh, this slide probably has too many colors, but, um, basically, we need to find thirty-two million dollars to pay for this project. Uh, otherwise, we're not going anywhere. So, um, we are able to pursue, um, tax credits and other forms of subsidies, um, which are the, the bulk of the, I, I can't remember which colors are which. But, um, these four line items here, starting with the eleven million dollar fine, line item, um, make up the bulk of our financing sources. And those are all the federal taxpayer sources that we all pay into and it funds projects like this all over the country, all over the state. Um, I'm actually, I think we chatted about this, but I'm not aware of any other recent affordable housing projects in Oxford. So it's been a while, maybe, since a project like this has been developed here. And then, um, the, the part of the, the part of this that kind of plays into our, um, our request about the TIF is, is about the mortgage. So just like any homeowner who pays a mortgage, um, a rental building like this typically also has a mortgage with the bank, so it's based on your income and, and after you pay your expenses, what's left over. And the amount, if we, if we weren't able to earn a TIF, um, with the town, we would be able to support a mortgage of about two million dollars. So based on the rental income that's, that's left over after you pay all of our expenses, we could support a two-million-dollar mortgage. And that leaves us about a million dollars short, so we have a million-dollar gap in our pie chart here. That we don't have, we've been pursuing grants, like every grant that we can think of. We talked to Senator Collins' office, we talked to the state DECD, talked to Adam, talked to the Northern Border Regional Commission, we're, we're gonna talk to them on Monday. You know, we've been, we, we're AVCOG, we're definitely shaking the trees to try to find any and all, um, funding sources that can help pay for the project. Uh, can you go to the next slide? So, um, Adam, um, it's, oh, let me just ask a general question. How familiar is everybody with TIFs in general, kind of how they work?
So we have, we have two TIFs in town, um, so there's some general familiarity there. So I think you don't, you don't, you don't, there's general familiarity.
Okay, yeah, so the way, the, the way the, um, the TIF will work for our project, um, is, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna pay property taxes and we're, and if we're, if we can earn a TIF, um, then a percentage of the property taxes that we pay would come back to the project. And it's important to point out that that doesn't go to us, it doesn't go to the project team, it doesn't go to the Caleb Group, doesn't increase any of our fees, all that stays the same. What it does is it helps us support a higher mortgage. So it helps us leverage more debt into the project to help close that million-dollar gap that I talked about a minute ago. And so just a little bit on the math, um, I looked up the current assessed value, it's six hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. So, um, based on the current mill rate, that's, the taxes are about ninety-six hundred dollars annually. The projected future assessed value, of course, this is just my best guess, looking at some comps in Andrew Scroggins County mostly. Um, but, um, if, if the, if the assessor, if the future assesses it at about seventy, seventy-three thousand dollars per unit, times seventy-seven units, we might have an assessed value on the order of five-point-six million. Um, and you might ask yourself, wait a second, they're spending thirty-two million dollars to get a building this valued at five-point-six million? Um, it's because of the income restrictions, right? We're, we're agreeing to a forty-five-year income restriction. So for forty-five years in this project, we cannot increase the rents beyond a certain number. And because of that, this is never gonna have any kind of market value that reflects the cost that goes into it. So, so the projected future taxes would be something like eighty-four thousand dollars a year. The ta, in, in other words, the tax increment is about seventy-four thousand dollars a year. That's the amount of tax increment that we're bringing to the property. And our request is gonna be, um, um, if, if you would see yourselves, will continue to work with us on this project, and this request, um, is for a seventy-five percent credit enhancement agreement for thirty years. So I know that's a lot to ask, um, it's a big ask, but it's important for the project for a bunch of reasons. What it does is it returns fifty-five thousand dollars annually for thirty years, which helps us, that increases our income in the bottom line, helps us leverage that much more mortgage, and helps us close that gap and get this project done. Um, if we don't have a TIF, we don't really have an obvious source for that other million dollars. Uh, you know, we're looking at our spreadsheets and we, we've identified a whole bunch of sources, but, but this is an important one that we need to fill. And the reason for thirty years is so that it's timed with our mortgage, so that, um, when the banks look at it, in this case, Maine State Housing is already acting with the bank, when they look at it, they'll say, oh, your, your TIF matches the term of the mortgage, no problem, you get it, you know, there's not gonna be any kind of like cash flow cliff during, during the period. So that's our request and, um, of course, you know, we're happy to discuss all the math, you know, when the time is right, with you, sit down with the assessor and, and go over all the details again. But, um, the, if you, if we look at the next slide, so, um, this is basically a replica of the previous slide, except if we have the TIF, the mortgage goes up by about fifty percent. It goes from two million to three million, which closes that gap that, that otherwise we would have. So it really helps us kind of, you know, get to the finish line on our financing. So, um, you probably know, we would have to create a TIF district to make this happen. The town, um, can capture the TIF, the revenues from that district, and then you can allocate it for special projects, uh, within the district. And, um, that's up to you, of course, but I think the dam is identified as a possible need, um, within the, you know, it's right there, within the district. And, um, I haven't studied this for Oxford, but, um, the, the taxable value that's in the TIF district is sheltered from the state and county revenue sharing formulas. So, um, we can work out the math with the assessor, but it's usually about forty to fifty cents on the dollar is, is really a kind of a hidden benefit to the town in that that value is sheltered from those formulas. Next slide. So the other part of why we're asking for this is that Main Housing has a scorecard for, for allocating all this funding. Um, there are a whole bunch of categories on the scorecard, including location and, um, excuse me. But, um, to the extent that we can earn property tax relief, um, it's worth three points on the scorecard. And, and the difference between a winning and losing project, if you study these scores at all, could just, could be one or two points, so. So that three points is really important to us from the perspective of being competitive. So, you know, we're asking the town to partner basically with this project as a financial partner. Next slide? Yeah, I think we skipped, yeah. So, um, the comprehensive plan goes back to two thousand seven, uh, so it's maybe a little older. But, um, we went back and kind of researched how this project might be consistent with the comp plan. So at, at the time the comp plan was written, or actually, this, parts of it go back to nineteen eighty, but, you know, they had identified twenty-five percent of the households in Oxford were considered to be earning moderate income, and thirty-six percent fell into the affordable housing gap, um, low-income and very low-income categories. On page thirty-three, they talked about how, um, families living in houses can, um, you know, if they've been in the house for a long time, maybe they own it outright, but the property taxes can go up and up and up, and they end up priced out of their house, so that can be a problem for older adults. So what this project can help with is, you know, older adults who need to downsize, but they wanna stay in Oxford. Um, they can, they don't wanna shovel snow anymore or worry about their roof. They can, um, live in this building, and then that frees up a single-family home for maybe a young family or someone who's got the energy to shovel snow or, you know, wanna have a, you know, in a bigger house or whatever. So, um, I mean, you can read all the verbiage here, we can, we can go into the next slide. So, um, the, the zoning ordinance, um, identifies the mill specifically as a redevelopment district. So I think that, that kind of, um, just sort of confirms that the, the, at, at one point at least, the town decision-makers agreed that the mill needed sort of special attention. And what that means is, um, the, the mill redevelopment district has, um, special rules that don't apply to any other district. So they're allowed more units on per acre, basically, tighter setbacks, more flexibility with the building placement. Um, and so it was, it was essentially to encourage denser development. So at, at one point at least, the, the people that work on the zoning ordinance recognize that. Um, there was, um, there was a TIF on the site, um, that actually just expired, I think just a few months ago, yeah. So the previous developer had probably gone through similar efforts to try to, to try to redevelop. Um, just a little restatement of the percentages they were asking for. Um, shorter, shorter term, the kind of similar percentages, they started seventy-five percent, stepped down to sixty percent. Next slide? And then, um, there, there's a lot of numbers here, but, um, the state of Maine just published a housing need survey, and they do talk about, um, Oxford County in particular. They identify based on, um, families moving in and the fact that a lot of older housing just, you know, really, it's, you know, Maine has the oldest housing stock in the nation, and that, in fact, it's not even close. So they've identified that between one thousand nine hundred and two thousand three hundred new housing units, um, just in Oxford County, would be required to account for historic underproduction and future population needs. So, yeah, I don't need to read the rest of it, but, um, we can go into the next slide. Is that the last slide? Oh, okay, that's the last slide. So thank you for your time, and I think what we're asking for is, um, just a consideration of the TIF request. And, um, I don't think we're, I don't think there's gonna be any kind of binding action tonight, but just, um, if, if you view the project as, you know, worthwhile, continuing discussions, we'd love to be able to continue discussion with Adam, sit down with the assessor, you go over the real numbers, um, and just continue working on this. And if, if, you know, if we can earn it, um, tee ourselves up for a town vote in June, yeah.
So if I can just make a couple of comments. So as far as, I'm sure the boards are familiar with this, as far as the credit enhancement agreements go, if, um, you know, that is something that the, that would be negotiated, you know, throughout the TIF process, that's not just a guarantee that it would be, you know, seventy-five percent or whatever those percentages would be. Um, so that's something that would have to be discussed. As far as, um, the approval of the TIF, it is a town meeting vote, but that would have to go to. Uh, when we discussed that, I kind of threw out, June is the next viable time that that could happen. One of the reasons that I wanted them to address the board here tonight, aside from bringing you guys up to speed, is to give the board an opportunity to think about this, because the development of TIF district is a labor intensive. So, um, without the board's, uh, there I say approval, I, I didn't plan on taking, you know, any action in this direction because, you know, we're gonna be spending legal money on this process and so forth. So, um, I don't know what the board would like to see or if the board would like to see more, um, or if the board would like some exploration done, uh, maybe with the town attorney on at least the beginning steps of this, or, or what direction the board would like to take, so. Certainly what I'm looking for is.
Am I getting it, if they don't get the TIF, they're not gonna do it? Am I reading that?
No, it's, it's.
I understand to make it easier for you.
We'll knock on more doors, let's put it that way.
No, I, I.
Yeah, and if there's a little gap, I mean, I, I worked in other states, and even there's a housing authority, or the state housing authority, which will actually happen.
But if we was to come up with something that wasn't the complete 75%, that would.
It's a starting ask, and he did say.
Well, mine's the last for the sky.
Yeah, so he did say it was aggressive, so it's just an ask, and as long as you give Adam the authority to start working on it, we'll, we'll just figure something out.
So I, I'll just add, you know, if, if we're not awarded the full ask, you know, that's obviously your decision, it could very well slow down the process, we might have to apply again to the Maine State Housing Authority. You know, we might have to go see, go knock on other doors, so it could slow everything down, and make an already kind of steep path that much steeper.
But I think that if we did get something, Maine Housing would probably see it as a very positive thing, and we'd probably get a one of the, was it three points in the QAP?
Yeah, that was a previous year's QAP, so we haven't, we haven't seen the next one, but that's what it looked like in the last one.
So if there was no TIF, and you were able to come up with that other million dollars somehow relatively easily, is that, is that gonna appease Maine State Housing, or is that, they're relying on a TIF of some sort?
So, so right, so we're asking for two reasons, it helps the finances and it earns points, right? So if we, if another million dollars fell in our lap, you know, we would call you back and say, hey, we need the TIF, but we would, we wouldn't, there's no other way to make up those three points also.
Yeah, and typically the state housing authorities, I see this in other states, they wanna see the town participating, and they have something, I'm forgetting the expression, but, you know, they're engaged, and a way to be engaged is to have some kind of financial participation. So it's, you know, home funds, I don't think you guys have any, but, or a real estate tax abatement. So this is the form of real estate, real estate tax abatement, or pilot. So it's, it's a, it's common practice to ask the town to participate and contribute a little bit in some capacity. And they kinda expect it to.
So have you considered a sliding scale on the 75% for 30 years? Because generally, that long a TIF, you would have a sliding scale.
We can, we can certainly talk about, we'd have to look at our projections, you know, because we don't wanna go underwater in year 20 or whatever, but we can certainly talk about it.
This is actually gonna be one of my comments, is the sliding scale, but also, most of the tips that I've been involved with, the 30-year term, most of them I've done are either 15 or 20 years. I think the state is allowing 30 years now, if I'm not mistaken, for.
Yeah, so there's, there's two flavors of TIF. You might have more experience with the DECD TIFs, the Economic Development TIFs, but Maine State Housing Authority also has the authority to kind of bring in tips, and they're very, very similar. So my only experience is with Maine Housing TIFs, and they're all, they're, most of them under 30 years, because of the mortgage.
Now, I will agree with Adam, because I have been involved as a staff member, working on the tips in a town, and it is very labor-intensive, and it does take up a lot of the staff and time, so that's another thing that you have to consider too.
I mean, I'm certainly, I'm certainly happy to go through the, you know, the beginning exercises, if you will, of exploring this. Some, maybe we can have more conversations about some of the percentages and so forth, you know, timeframes. You know, I, obviously with some of this, I would need to consult our attorney that helps us with our TIF items anyway. So if the board has a level of interest to that point, then I'm happy to at least go that far. But I think before we get to the point where we're drafting a TIF document and trying to put it on the town anymore, we need to be having more conversations to make sure we're.
Yeah, I'm not really making a decision tonight.
Do you need any other information, you know, we'll reach us, we'd be very happy to have had this discussion if you wanted us here as well.
I think the project is, it looks good, I think there's a lot of questions. You know, parking, obviously, we've already brought that up. The other question I did have about the path being opened up, is that path being opened up just for the residents, or is it going to be a public pathway that the people in Oxford can use?
But I, we, in my mind, we tend it to be a public pathway. So when you mentioned your kids are crossing the property to go to school, we'd love to see that happen again. So it's not meant to just be for us, we just don't want cars running through it.
Cars never went through.
Okay, I didn't know that, but.
From the timeline, no. I mean, maybe 40 years.
It did go through.
Prior to, prior to 40 years ago.
It did go through.
Yeah, we're envisioning foot and bicycles, essentially.
Well, when I moved here 40 years ago, it was a footpath at that point. The kids used it for school, but it was also used to cross to the post office and get to the other side. And I suppose my husband remembers, because he was born here, when there were cars there a lot, but.
Yeah, the intent is public access, we got the parking, we really don't see that as an issue. As Jeanie pointed out, there's ample land, we can out a few spaces. We'll work with Kingston to understand what the ordinance calls for, but.
And just to reiterate, we're gonna do a full site plan and subdivision application very soon, so we'll, we'll review our site plans extensively, you know, with the ordinance and the town staff, and look at utilities, look at accessibility.
When you do a project like this, do you put that out for bid for local guys, or is this something that?
Yeah, so we're.
You've got your own people, and that's.
No, so we'll, we'll be bidding this out, so this is like, means away again, but we'll be putting it out for bid, probably solicit three bids, probably all Maine-based. The one party that we're working with right now, Portland Builders, sorry, I just gotta check, I have some ADGCs in my head. They're based out of Portland, they've done affordable housing, they've done historic rehabs, so they're well versed in this. They're local, they'll look to solicit local cell contractors, so.
Well, I'm just looking for whether they would bring employment.
It definitely would, definitely would, and that's something that we're looking to do, yes. As well as MBWBD, that, you know, folks look for that.
Are you working with Mike Fines, Portland Builders?
No, working with Jeremy Somes, who's the head, who was the other head, I forget, he was in. Anyways, Jeremy Somes, there you go, she knows him.
Who's that?
Josh Kishman, who used to be in.
Yeah, so Jeremy's the head right now, and he's, he's been very involved in pricing everything out, so, yeah.
That's Somes?
That's Somes, yes, yeah.
Just by way of reference, I'm working on another project in Farmington right now, and we, we had a short list of invited bidders that included Hebert, based in Lewiston, H. Callahan, based in Auburn, E.W. Littlefield, I wanna say they're in like the Madison-Stapleton area, I don't know if you know. And a couple of, so, you know, and we're certainly open to suggestions, you know, the only requirement would be they'd have to be bondable for $30,000 projects. It rules out a lot of the kind of mom and pop shops.
The board.
I, I think it'd be, in our interest to move forward, at least on the employment side of that, because I do think it's a project that is, that is needed, you know, in the area, and it'd be good to see something happen with that, you know, finally, after many years of. Projects that never came through, so I would be in favor of at least when the ball started, zero minute.
That sounds good, so we'll make sure that we're in touch, and we can start looking at this and see what direction we can go, so.
Yep, no, we're reaching, thank you.
Probably right after Thanksgiving, sounds great.
No, probably wait, so. Thank you, appreciate your time, happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you very much. You gonna take that down to our pocket over again?
Okay, please, may I report that?
Sure. That's the extent of my IT right there.
Oh, okay, and we've also, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I think instead of, yeah, we're not ready to date people this soon.
Just to toss it.
You ready?
I'm good to go, sir. Thanks, Adam.
Business item 5.5, accept $150 donation from Bernard Joyce Reiner to keep Oxford or Reserve account.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, all those in favor? Your thanks, Joyce, last meeting, and she was here.
Yeah.
5.6, police cruiser setup, continued.
So this is a continuation of the last discussion we had about the, yeah, he shed some light on the subject. The, setting up the police cruiser as far as the equipment goes. The board had asked that the police chief try and get three quotes, because we were asking to forgo the bid process, or, excuse me, we did the bid process, we didn't get anything back, we were looking to use some quotes. So the chief has reached out to get quotes, he was only able to get two. Did you wanna go over those quotes, and what we're looking at for figures?
Sure, I got one quote from PBC out of Rumford. The total setup cost was $16,632.43. Jeff Hopp had also submitted a quote of $17,965. I did see that there is a place where we could probably shave two grand off the belt. I had asked for a half storage box to go in the back of that truck, so instead of stacking the equipment in behind the operator of the vehicle, we could put it in there, I felt it would be safer. But that is 2,000, that could get us back down to 5964 without that box. And then I could look at in the future, maybe getting that with.
Who do you know that did it?
Jeff Hopp, he set up both of the charges.
But, oh, and he's the sec, he's.
He was the second bidder, yes.
It's Hoppard lower?
Hoppard was 17, PBC was 16.3, but again, the box was an issue. The box that PBC had cited was 3,000, Jeff Hopp had cited one for two and one for three, from two different companies.
But I thought when we looked at PBC, he did, in his, in his amount, he did not include the box.
But at the time, he couldn't even find that, so I had to direct them to what Jeff Hopp had found.
So do you.
So was the box in it there?
For that 17,965, it is.
But the other guy's, the box isn't in it?
Correct.
So.
Says he's in.
Is it listed in there now?
Yeah, the truck bed organized.
Is that, what does he have for a cost in there for the.
3,000.
How much?
Three.
Okay, that was what he quoted me after then, so it is in there, yeah.
Custom mark, yeah.
So you're talking 13.3, and who knows if that reduces the labor sum?
Probably it would reduce some labor installment. I did the math on the 17, now you do the math on the 16, we can take away 3,000 from that, for the cost of the box.
Wouldn't it make sense to get it all, instead of having to go back and redo it?
It would.
The reason I said, I said, we've had this, we've had this cruiser now for a few months, and it's still not in use.
Because you're waiting for the equipment.
Waiting for the approval.
To me, it makes sense to get what needs to be in it and installed. We're, we're talking payments here in a bit, and if you don't have that portion of it, and then you have to go back, you're gonna probably pay enough, end up paying more, and it's not all complete. So my recommendation was to get complete what you need and get it done.
I would agree, and I think most of we go with Russian vehicles for 16, 632, 43.
Sorry, minute, that is, that is with the ball, we got that straight, right?
Yes. Those PBCs, though?
Yes. I look for a point for you.
Yep.
What was the other total bid, because I'm not seeing, I'm just not.
It was 17, 965, yeah.
With the 3,000 and 2,500. Okay.
Right, yeah, 14, 715, and then 3250 for the estimated labor, so it's just 17, 965.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Can you give me a timeline, thank you?
Oh, the last time I spoke, I actually had spoken to Jeff, going on a timeline of two to three months, he did it all in. He can set it up in about a week once he has it.
As long as all the parts come.
That would be nice.
No, he was gonna do another part of that.
Well, George, department, per court.
Uh, we'll start with, as of 2 o'clock this afternoon, the new body cameras that we got are finally online. Short officer training with them, just to show them how they're operating. We've been doing that all afternoon, but they're now functional, so everybody will have a body cam, which is company. The shooting incident that happened in Lewiston, obviously that created a lot of work and anxiety for a lot of people. I've been in touch since that night of the incident with a lot of our business owners, working with them, with security, making themselves feel comfortable along with their customers, and a lot of the work with Casino, Walmart. That particular night, we also stopped and spoke with the Big Apple, who agreed to close the doors that night too, for the unknown. That was before the vehicle was actually coming that night. Everybody's been really supportive, Adam and I actually, he went with me one day when I was doing business checks with people. So they was glad to see us stop and check in, and know that we have the concerns with their patron saint, the American. I took the new chief's class in the academy, the end of September, just letting you know, I got that done, which was a superb class. I'm pretty thankful to do that. In an update, we had a complaint about dogs on Jenny Lane. So Robert and I had a meeting with the district attorney about that, to go over what we've been doing, what we can do in the future with it. It wasn't great for the future, other than we was told pretty much continue to summons. We've already issued like 12 summonses to this one residence, and I understand people are getting pretty frustrated, but.
Because they're, they're roaming.
Right.
They are roaming the neighborhood, and they keep coming.
Yeah, and we've been issuing the paperwork.
Are these dogs that Robert can catch?
Uh, no, no, because they're seen roaming, and then they go right back home. So we've been going off people's pictures, complaints, and issuing summonses when the guy will open the door for us. But according to the district attorney, we have to keep on that route. This one particular complainant would like to go, would like us to go and just seize the dogs. And I don't have the legal authority, nor does Robert, to do that, that'd have to be done through the court. And as long as we're summoning for dogs at large, it's not going to happen. So we've had a couple of aggressive calls with these dogs that we've discussed with the ADA also. He's aware, they are tracking us, so if we can do something more with these dogs in the soon future, I hope, that will already have been started.
Just to make sure, I'm sorry, just to make sure that I'm clear.
Yes.
When you issue summonses, I mean, the police's authority ends at issuing the summonses. Once you've written the summons, it is up to the district attorney to then take further enforcement action, am I correct?
Yep.
So when the district attorney's office is choosing not to prosecute or move.
A lot of times they dismiss these cases, or these people get a hundred dollar fine, they're civil offenses, and then they go on their way. And it's really not solving the problem, but this isn't a problem just located at Jenny Lane, unfortunately. There's other, other areas like that.
How do you change the ordinance for dog ownership?
This is state law.
It's state law.
Yeah.
The SP, they came and took all puppies to that household. Is there anything that we can do to have them come back in and take? What's happening, it's a, it's a brother and sister, and they're not getting them fixed, so they're having these puppies. And these parents are ugly. The parents have come out probably a year and a half when I was walking my dog, and. The parents have come out, probably a year and a half when I was walking my dog, and bit me and bit my dog. Now, a question, if they come into my yard, can they be shot?
No.
Okay, thank you for your question, thank you.
The only way they can be shot is if they're attacking like your chickens or something like that.
Or my dog, or me?
Or you.
Or you, themselves, yes, yes.
Okay.
But I say it that way because I want to make sure that if this happens, that is what happens, because if not, you made those charges.
Right, then it's my luck, I probably, yeah.
Well, it's a tough situation, but we have been working with the DA's office to sort of solve some of this for the residents.
What's the?
What they fix.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
The legality of trapping a dog on her property, if it comes on her property, for the safe. And then calling animal control.
I think, honestly, I believe probably a good defense attorney is going to say you baited that dog. And that case just got flushed, the way a district attorney's office does now.
Well, you're not, you're not gonna, they're not doing anything, any.
Right.
But.
By the way, you turn around and the poor person that trapped that dog, they will do something.
If they have to start taking, going and getting their dogs back from the shelter and paying that fee every time they're picked up. I, I'm not trying to tell anybody what to do.
No, no.
I'm sure you're frustrated, depending on where you live, probably depends on how this gets resolved. If you're not in the woods, it probably gets resolved.
In a different.
Depending on if you live in town.
Yep.
Because I know that Stacy, there's a house between them, and then there's Stacy's, and she has a small dog. And she will not let that dog out of her sight because of their dogs. And they are ugly.
Which I will confirm, they're pretty aggressive dogs.
Very.
Well, my son's in a wheelchair and walks that Webber Brook Road right by Jenny Lane. I can't even, it just scares me to think that if the dog was to attack Eddie in his wheelchair, he couldn't even defend himself. I mean, he'd just be at the mercy of the dog.
And didn't the woman diagonally across, there was a woman that they had to call the rescue, because the dog bit her? And they had the rescue down there.
Yeah, and that information's gone through the district attorney's office.
Okay, good.
Yeah, they have that.
Because I believe that woman's had a stroke or, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But I wanted to update on that, because I know that that was a big concern, and we've been working on it. I'm as frustrated about this as the residents are there also, so.
Keep working on it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't even walk, I have a seventy-pound golden doodle. He wasn't seventy pounds when he got bed, but that dog jumped right up in my arms, and those dogs were circling me.
The unfortunate part too is we've had summonses before, that we've tried to sort of, nobody will answer the door, and it just drags the process out.
Try and wait at night, they might be on time at night.
Yeah. Um, and on top of all that, um, we do have an open position right now, that we won't be trying to fill very soon, so. Other than that, we've been as busy as usual, nothing to slow down at all. Now we're, we're starting to come into the holidays, and we all know we respond to Walmart quite a bit with the shoplifters, and that's, that's not going to decrease.
Very good. Time to have you report.
I'll make a quick, uh, just one quick note about the police department. I did just want to say that, that, um, the night of the, you know, the Lewiston shooting and so forth, uh, one of the things that I want to commend the police department for, though that did not happen in this jurisdiction, the police chief was on the phone with me pretty, pretty quickly after that incident occurred. Um, he was already, you know, in, you know, he'd already come into town, was, uh, already taking action to make sure that some of our higher value targets in town, if you will, he had, him, he and his officers and so forth were taking the necessary steps to keep things squared away and safe here, which I commend him for his quick action on that.
That was a long night.
Yes. As far as some remaining open positions, we have filled a couple of positions at the highway department, so we only have one remaining driver-laborer position open. We still have the part-time snow plowing, you know, posted, hoping to, you know, snag a few, uh, folks there. As the chief just mentioned, there is now one full-time police officer position that is opened, opened up. And then we are still working through the fire chief process as we speak. Um, somebody in the back room stole my thunder on the K-house, I was also going to mention that the, uh, K-house, uh, did pass, uh, at the voting the other day, so I'm excited about that, I'm excited to get that all taken care of so we can move forward, so. That's what I have for you folks.
It's not done yet?
It is not done yet.
I haven't even asked him or talked to him or called him or nothing.
Well, next week.
Yeah, I'll give him until next, thanks, day after, thanks.
Good, yes, right.
Selective items? Uh, good to hear about the, you know, the officers going business to business, and that's something that certainly, certainly will keep happening.
Yeah.
You know, they got, I know they got a lot of calls to deal with every day, so wouldn't have that opportunity to go into a business and.
You can see it's appreciated.
I think that's awesome.
Sign works. Those have been shared, are these the last?
No, I, I do, and I'm like that.
There we go. The hell.
That's why we can't have nice things.
You may have the plastic go, or the sign frame is in the middle, inside. This one's already signed, did we miss something there?
I don't know what.
This is already signed.
One of those will go back in the stack.
Why don't you put this back in the stack?
Set them on stack. Is any of it? Should have kept that better out.
As small as I can, it doesn't go in.
Hey, right? Dogs that like to run off too, and they're fast, they really want to spoke to you, you can't see it.
I was thinking, if it's not from a reading. I was thinking that probably scolding them.
People run off a lot, change their mind.
You know?
Bring you go to work, and then the dogs, all of them pick it up. This side will I go or?
This is an amazing business plan. I know why, I, I can figure out why I never can make it go, because I figured I had to pay it back.
They get quite a good chunk of the back of the state.
Huh?
They get quite a good chunk of the back of the state federal government.
Oh, I, I mean, I'd say that's how that plan's designed.
Yeah, well, when we were talking, uh, when the Minnesota citizens committee, remember, we had Floyd, that guy, going like, almost like seventy percent of it is funded by the state and the federal government, it's like, why not do it?
I sent Adam, so he can put that and call his basket, so we can have that plan.
What do you do with town Christmas card, do you have an office on, have an Oxford that you circulate to wherever? There's a towns or.
Oh, do we, or one year we did. Oh, just send it then, we'll do that, yeah, we can.
Uh, I'll take motion on the warrants. I'm looking at food, warrant. Sorry. Three one, four two, four.
Yeah, four four, those.
Motion to the second by Floyd, all those in favor? Look, motion for Jared? And seconded?
There you go.
All those in favor? Good Thanksgiving, Lois, anybody else?
Yes. Well.
Yeah, I've got one.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Even an election here.
So you want to put your name first, like?